Hey, everybody. Welcome to the December 21st, 2020 meeting of the Rochester City Council. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Very good. Now, we're going to have Councilmember Peterson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for that. Welcome, everybody, to our last meeting of the year. First, on a more somber note, I want to announce the passing of Sue Douglas. Sue Douglas was a city councilperson and represented us at the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. So, we're going to have a brief moment of silence for Sue Anne Douglas. Thank you. And then also, just, we have a little resolution of remembrance that we're going to send to the family that I'll just read briefly. Whereas on December 17th, 2020, the city of Rochester lost a decades-long resident and elected official, Sue Douglas. Whereas Ms. Douglas served on the Rochester Planning Commission, Rochester City Council, and represented Rochester area on the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Ms. Douglas' passion for service and the city of Rochester will be sorely missed. Therefore, it is resolved that the Rochester City Council offers our heartfelt condolences to the family of Sue Douglas and our community for all of the loss. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, could you please just change that to read Sue Anne?
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled presentations. Fiona, is there anybody? Doesn't look like anybody calling in tonight.
No one has called in.
So first, we have the annual audit presentation. Anthony, did you want to set this up or just go right to Raina?
Yeah, we can go right to Raina, our city's auditor. Raina's here tonight and on Zoom and ready to give the annual report.
Okay, welcome, Raina, as usual.
Thank you, Mayor Bixson. Nice to see everyone. Again, my name's Raina Emmons. I'm a partner with PSLZ. My pleasure tonight to bring to you the city of Rochester's annual audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. And what a year it's been. Rochester has been very, you've gotten a lot of things done this year despite circumstances. I do have a very good report for you this evening. The city has received the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is the unmodified opinion. So, no disclaimers or exceptions or anything like that. Nothing bad to note, certainly. I'll start out with a few highlights. This year, property taxes, despite what you would, you know, when we were sitting in March and April and thinking about how property tax values might end the year. We've, I'm very surprised that, I would have never guessed, but property tax values are up. This, your fiscal year end, your property tax values were up 5.11% over the prior year. The year before, it was about 3.6%. So, those are, those are actually very nice increases in taxable values. You know, you're not raising the property tax millages, just the values are going up. And that's really, that really helps the bottom line, but also speaks volumes for the city of Rochester and in your, in your real estate. The city added $240,000 to the general fund fund balance this year, and you came in $118,000 under budget. Given that the last quarter of your fiscal year, so April, let's see, it would have been April, May, June, was the start of the COVID situation. So, there were a lot of things, I think, that didn't happen near the end of the year that you may have gotten done otherwise. But that's not, not a bad thing. You came in way under budget then. General fund transfers this year included 1.25 million to the local street fund. And some of your big capital projects this year, certainly, you had about 2.2 million total in the governmental funds alone in capital projects. And that includes, of course, the DPW campus facilities project, you know, including some city hall renovations. And, you know, that was, those were the big, the big things were facilities this year. And I think will continue into the new fiscal year as well. In debt, the city added the $5 million capital improvement bond for those facilities. And you added 1.57 million for the Oakland-McCombe Interceptor debt bonds. We've always seemed to have to reference that every year. Those, again, are out of the city's control. Those are just kind of handed to you as additional debt from Oakland County Water Resource Commission. The, also, you added $938,000 to the state revolving fund loan. So, you know, trying to build some additional infrastructure in the water sewer funds, and that's in a nice 2.5%, so I'm glad you're taking advantage of that. I think that should be about, you might be done with that as well. Paid down over $1 million in principal, 1,032,000 in principal alone on your, on the existing debt. Water and sewer fund this year, I, something I found interesting that the water sales and the sewer sales, the usage revenue was down 2% in both categories. They aren't necessarily always the same, water usage and sewer usage. But with everybody home, but I, you know, I think a lot of the commercial buildings and things like that were not in full operation. So, that led to you're, you're down just, just 2%, or nothing substantial. But I just thought that was interesting that both water and sewer were down. The parking fund, which you just started up a couple of years ago, you wanted that to be operationally solvent. And it looks like you were getting there. You added just under $300,000 to the bottom line this year in the parking fund. The net pension liability this year. Pension liability was up 1.47 million, but the trust assets went up 1.47. So, basically, it was, the net, net increase was $7,000 this year, which is really negligible. You had some nice investment earnings on the pension plan this year, and that countered some of the more aggressive assumptions and things that the state's requiring MERS to do, which really spiked your, your total pension liability. So, overall, I think you should, that you'd be very pleased with how the pension's ending up. Also, the, of course, the city took advantage of the, of the firefighter grant. You had 900 and some thousand dollars this year that you received on that. I think you'll have more coming in, in the coming, in the coming year. With that, could I answer any questions that anyone might have?
Also, questions for our auditor, Councilmember Albrecht.
Raina, thank you. This is the first time I've, being on council, that I've had the pleasure of having you present. You mentioned something about the parking fund contributing $300,000. I was, I, I went through the highlights. I didn't go through the other 90 pages of this. Is that, you know, because I know we've, we've been struggling with that. Is that not just the DDA contribution? Or did, when you said we, we contributed $300,000 to the parking fund, can you just elaborate on that? I just want to be clear what.
Sure. You added to the, you added to the fund, fund balance, we call it net position in that fund. But essentially, it's the, you know, the retained earnings or whatever terminology you'd like to use in that. Let me see what the. Sorry, looking at that fund. No, that, I mean, Mr. Maggio, if you have anything to contribute with that, I don't, that, you have 1.49 million of revenues, and you had 936,000 of expenditures. So, you ended up 266,000, you had interest expense on the, on the debt in that fund. So, you came out, net increase of 299,982.
Here, we have. I guess my, my question, Anthony, would be, was that because of the DDA contribution to the fund that we have that position?
Yeah, there is some, I believe, depreciation, Bixson, with that. It wasn't strictly a cash add. But yes, the DDA contribution added to the, the bottom line on that one as well, yes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying for me. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Further questions? Hey, do we need to accept the report? Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just an acceptance of the audit.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that excellent report. It's always good news to hear that we're in good financial shape. And Raina, have a very happy New Year.
Thank you. And I, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Maggio and Mr. Wing and in their staff. This was a very difficult situation this year just because of the, the COVID. And you had a lot going on, but everyone came through, and I sincerely appreciate all of their efforts. It wouldn't happen without a great team there at City Hall. I really, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight. Have a good one.
Good night.
Okay, next is approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of December 14th, 2020.
No move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. There is not anything on the consent agenda tonight. There's not any old business, public hearings. Under legislative deliberations, is consideration of a resolution moratorium prohibiting selling, peddling is the term, in the downtown area for 60 days due to COVID safety concerns? Just for people in the audience, of course, not for stores or anything. This is for, like, street vendors, people selling, you know, stuff on the sidewalks. Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I was just, actually, you did a pretty good explanation of that. I was just going to make sure for peddling that everybody knew that this was more of, you know, the necklaces that are the light up and that kind of stuff. And again, due to COVID, we, we don't want to have every, you know, everybody kind of migrating to go get the, the bright, blinky lights that people are, are selling, maybe to go on a, on their hat or around their neck or that sort of stuff. So, what staff's requesting is a 60-day moratorium.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
A question. So, would this apply to musicians as well?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't believe so, Chief. This is actually the peddling, but if you can get into the details.
Sure. This would not apply to, to that. This would be where there's actually something being sold. Basking is the term that's used, and that's actually something that we are very limited to enforce in the downtown area. But we can limit the vending or sales hand-to-hand to persons downtown through our peddling ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess I just wanted to ask city administration the, the decision around the 60-day demarcation. So, given all the concerns about COVID and our understanding and willingness to try and help port our local downtown merchants, it is 60 days enough? Can we extend this, or was there a specific reason why it's only 60 days?
Chief?
I think that was primarily to get us through the time when the bright lights show and certainly the extended amount of foot traffic in the downtown area. I think there's an anticipation, hopefully, that things from a downtown perspective will change, given 60 days, I hope. So, I think that was the, that was the view of how that was picked, since we'll have lights on through the end of January.
So, at any time, say we did it for 90 days, at any time, we could retract that, correct, in one council meeting?
Yes, I mean, it could work both ways. We could extend it or, or limit it, given current events at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, does that apply to the Salvation Army bell ringers as well?
No, it would not.
Okay, all right. And then I would like to keep it in sync with the executive order as you presented it.
You're good. Do I see a motion out there someplace?
No move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto reports, our regular business. A report from the Dinosaur Hill on the Community Garden. Sue Neil, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. It's nice to see everybody. Even if it's behind a computer, I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight to hopefully talk about, instead of all the things we can't do, something that we managed to be able to do. And that was to run a pretty much normal year at the Community Garden. Just really quickly, for those of you who are newer to council, the Community Garden was a collaborative project that grew out from city administration, the City Beautiful Commission, and Dinosaur Hill. It followed the heels of a survey that city management had done on ways that underused parks could be put to better use within the city. And several residents had expressed interest in a community garden. And so, city administration liked the idea, looped in City Beautiful Commission, and then approached Dinosaur Hill because administration wasn't interested in taking on the task of running the garden. And so, they had approached Dinosaur Hill as a partner. And we jumped at the opportunity because it aligned well with our mission and thought it was another great way to serve the residents of the city. And so, we've been in that partnership for several years now. I'm not going to run through the report because you all have it, and it's, I think, pretty detailed. So, I don't want to run through all the details, just a couple of highlights. I think the survey that we sent out showed that overall some really important benefits are gained by people who are participating in, in the Community Garden. And we certainly want to thank the city administration for working so closely with us this year as we worked to navigate opening the garden safely with COVID going on. That was certainly a little added, added extra challenge, and it was very kind that they took time out to help us navigate that process. Well, I know there was tons of other stuff going on at, at city administration. So, I want to, you know, recognize that, how much we appreciated that. And I think, you know, one of the other really nice takeaways from it this year is in coordination with the Community Garden, we also have the Dinosaur Hill Children's Garden. And a shout out to the Women's National Farm and Garden Association, who provides some of the funding to help run that part of the garden. And we, because we couldn't have kids up there this year, we had one of our volunteers from the neighborhood really take charge of it this year. And she would take all harvest season long, she would go up to the garden every day and, and pack little paper bags and go around on her bicycle throughout the neighborhood and, and the greater Rochester area, delivering bags of produce for seniors who were confined at home because of COVID, or in, in some who were having some pretty significant health and financial challenges. And I thought that was such a nice way for the garden to have the opportunity to, to give back to, to our community. So, that's my end of it in a nutshell. Again, I don't want to belabor it. I know we're all probably so sick of Zoom by this point. So, I want to take of your time, but I do want to answer any questions that, that you guys might have.
Thank you, Sue. Councilmember Albrecht.
First off, Sue, it's, it's a pleasure to meet you. And they say a picture says a thousand words. Those pictures in your report, this is just a feel-good story. I mean, we are all confined indoors. We had things restricted. And to see people working in the gardens and then you, you know, in providing some of that produce for people who needed it. I mean, this is just a great way to end the year. I was just, I was smiling as I went through the deck, looking at all the pictures. And I think one of our council members has a garden over there also. As I think Mr. Bavacqua, Councilmember Bavacqua is, is a, has a plot there. But he never gave me any vegetables, so I got to talk to him after the meeting.
Lots of work on remedying that. And you know what? That was one of the highlights, I think, of my summer, looking back over the time, was just being able to go up to the garden and, and you'd arrive in there, you know, families, when they're outside, and the weather's gorgeous, and they're active. And, and yes, it was, it was therapeutic all around, I think. I'm glad you enjoyed the photographs.
Thank you for, thank you for all you do, Sue. I appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
I never got any vegetables either. Councilmember Bavacqua.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the finances. First of all, nice, nice to meet you, Sue. And we did enjoy our gardening experience. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a great little space, or big space, actually. I had a question about the financials. I'm looking at this report, and it's showing like kind of a net revenue of $4,400. What, what happens with that money? And if there's a net revenue of $4,400, why is the account balance $3,500?
Well, what happens is every year, we take a portion of what remains in that garden fund, and we stash it for future needs. And that's set aside in a designated account at Dinosaur Hill. The remainder, the balance, goes into the general operating fund of the nature preserve to cover the administrative costs and the direct expenses that we had from the garden.
So, so help me out here. The account balance of 35, 69, 61, is that the Community Garden account?
Yes, that's, that's what sits in the designated account as of right now. And that's for, you know, as we look to open up the next year, if we had expenses, we could draw from there. Or if, you know, we had larger expenses associated with the garden, that sort of slowly built up every year is like a reserve account, if you will.
So, what was the account balance in that account at the beginning of the year?
It would have been, I'm trying to think of what we carried over this year. We carried over somewhere around $400 this year. It wasn't anything tremendous. We took $4,000 to the Dinosaur Hill account, offset our costs for the garden, and the balance is what stayed in the designated account.
So, what are the costs for the garden, aside from the 112? Are you talking about?
112 are the direct costs. The remainder is in the time that it takes us to administer the garden. The rest of it is staff time, and I don't line item my, you know, staff by hour or anything like that. So, that, that covers the administrative expense of running the garden.
Okay, okay. So, 400 was in there. It's $900 less. That's, yeah, $1,300. That's, you're, you're, you're less $1,300 while 14 with the 112 spent. So, okay, so we brought in $4,500, and we're going to end with $3,500, with 900 of it going to the.
Well, that, that designated account builds up over the years. So, that's not just contributions coming in from this year. That, that's the designated account as it sits, right? So, each year, maybe, you know, somewhere between, say, $400 and $500 gets added to that account.
Okay. I guess, I guess one of the reasons I'm asking is I'm trying to find out if there's ways that we can put some money towards perhaps like having somebody beat back the weeds a little more consistently throughout the year. It gets kind of hairy there. And, you know, otherwise, I'm okay with kind of the general shape of it, just, just from a residence perspective. But it, it does get a little, a little messy looking, and the weeds start encroaching.
Yeah, and that's been, you know, that's an interesting challenge, right? Because when we originally started the project, you know, the, the, the day-to-day maintenance, if you will, was extremely low, right? Because when the facility is essentially brand-new, the weeds were virtually nonexistent and were not much of an issue. And obviously, the older the garden gets, without major scrape outs of, of the old wood chips and things like that, the, that sort of day-to-day maintenance challenge grows. And I know that this year was especially challenging because the city had so many other priorities too to balance. So, it was, you know, I'm sure it was tough at their end as well, from a maintenance perspective.
I, I guess what I'm getting at is with 4,000 in revenue and 112 in expenses, I'd like to hope that there would be some way to fund taking care of those things. Just a suggestion.
Do we average 4,000 a year? I thought that was a cumulative.
It's cumulative.
Right. That's, I don't think we average 4,000 a year in, in revenue.
Not once you've taken out administrative costs, right? It's that between $400 and $500, that sort of quote-unquote revenue that, that fills back into that account. Because, you know, you're definitely right. The income coming into the garden is pretty much the same every year because we sell out every year.
And then what's that income?
I'd have to look at the report. It would be 70 or 30 times our plot number. So, that's that 40, whatever you quoted, 4,400.
4,580 is the annually.
Yep, correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. That's the, that's the annual income, Steve.
Okay. So, you're hoping some of that money can get spent to weeding and stuff like that?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm only seeing 112 in expenses, and I'm seeing $4,500.
112 in direct expenses. You have to, to realize the amount of time that, that we're, I mean, I, I hope council sees some value in, in the time it takes that our organization is investing in the project.
It's 135 hours that you have listed there?
That, I think that's what we had accounted for this year.
That's like, that's $33 an hour, just, just so you know.
And again, that, that's taking in, those are the direct hours that we spent. We also had hours from our administrative staff that's not accounted for there, as well as the hours of community service that we arrange to take place at the garden.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sue, for coming and giving this presentation tonight. I really appreciate it. I serve on the City Beautiful Commission as well. And I remember at the beginning of the spring, we had questions about the Community Garden, and we're hopeful that some of, like, the boards could be replaced, maybe some mulching could be done. I haven't made it up, I didn't make it up there this year. And for the benefit of the public, I'm just wondering if any of that happened. I know that plans changed because of COVID, but were we able to replace some of those boards and do the mulching to help with, like, the weed issue, as Councilmember Bavacqua brought up?
What we were able to accomplish this year, we did have different plans rolling into this garden as, as I think we all had different plans rolling into this spring than what actually materialized. So, originally, we were working with the city to do a more significant replacement, and then DPW got up against time issues and weren't allowed to have, you know, staff up there working when COVID first hit. And so, we did end up, they did, DPW ended up replacing the worst damaged logs, you know, so that we weren't having areas where, like, soil was spilling out. So, they took care of that immediate need. And then they helped us address some of the areas where the fencing had been damaged over the winter. What did not end up happening was any type of scraping out of those wood chips in replacement of the mulch. I had a few community service volunteers put in 100 hours plus on re-mulching some areas within the children's garden and some of the, and adding some mulch within the community garden. But that's putting growing material on top of growing material at that point, right? Until that gets scraped out, those weeds are just going to come back up through. And our issue is now, because it's been so many years, you know, those weeds are down embedded. So, it's not like we can just ask our gardeners, "Oh, clean up around your plots," you know, because it's, yeah. And they're, they're monster weeds at this stage of the game.
So, would that be a? So would that be a goal for next year? Or would that be a question that would be more appropriate to ask the DPW?
I, I think that that's something that we should explore in conjunction with the DPW in greater detail because they would have the expertise on what it would take and what it would cost to pull something like that off, I think.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage, did you have your hand up?
No, it was all, it was all answered. But Sue, it's good to see you and thank you again for all your efforts with the garden.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So Sue, it is good to see you. And from one of the beginning, people on the community garden, I think this is awesome where it's blossomed too. And what you, what you've done and how it's really had an effect on the community long-term. And I, I really just want to thank you and I want to thank all the volunteers that actually put in all that additional time that is not paid for to keep this going.
And I want to thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for being one of the original visionaries who really saw that this project had potential in the city of Rochester because, as I said, it sold out every year. So I appreciate you having that vision early on and supporting the project.
Well, thank you, Sue. And, you know, I, I, I know that some of the council people have a concern over some of these issues. And it's been something that has been ongoing that we talked about when we first started this. This was going to be totally different and something that was going to be a little tougher to manage. And a few years after we really got started, you know, it kind of just went to the wayside because many people didn't go because we had really hot summers and things like that. I think that caused a lot of some of that overgrowth in that. But I think what's, the plans that you have in place now are awesome. Your presentation was great. And it was really nice to see even the children's garden go to where it's at today too. Because when Home Depot and Fiskars gave their grants, I mean, it really helped us get this really off the ground. So that's awesome. I just think that in the future, the expectations of, you know, need to be understood of how this actually works because it is more volunteerism. That's what everybody knew. And then we'd have to really get, you know, fi- fine tune it with the DPW as to what these costs and ask works. I remember Director Boland told us this was going to be an ongoing thing that we were going to have to be faced with. So, you know, any help or guidance, I'm here if you ever want to talk. But I think you guys have done a great job. And again, thank all the volunteers over there for everything they've done to keep this going. Because you've taken it to, to the next level by far. So.
Thank you very much. And I think it's important for this city to realize too, that this has served and is an example for other cities in terms of how they can set up a community garden. I know a couple of years into the project, we did an interview with SEMCOG and they did a very nice article about this unique partnership for one of their publications. And as you're probably, most of you are aware, we have an identical relationship with a community garden in the city of Rochester Hills. And that grew out of them, you know, the mayor coming to visit to see the project that was happening in Rochester. So Rochester is a, you know, a thought leader in, in terms of this partnership. So I hope it's something that you're all proud of.
Very much. Thank you, Sue. Great work.
I know Rochester Hills is always trying to copy us.
I was just saying.
And I'll quote you.
Don't tell Barnett.
First person I'm going to tell. So Sue, thank you for coming tonight.
I appreciate the time.
And thank you for your work in the parks. And while I have you on, we are forming a subcommittee for park grants and stuff, and we'd like you to serve on it. You can.
I love a good subcommittee, so heck with that. I'm honored. I appreciate that.
So thank you for coming. Thank you for your work and have a very happy holiday.
Thank you. You all as well.
Bye. Thanks, Sue.
Next is a consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold downtown Rochester Snow Glow on Friday, January 16th and Saturday, January 17th.
Motion to approve.
Kristy, welcome.
Hi, good evening, council. Steve, I didn't know if you wanted to lead off with anything or if you want me to just do an overview.
Overview is great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So as, not a surprise to anyone, we're, Oakley County is not going to be bringing the Fire and Ice Festival to Rochester this year. We received official notification of that a few weeks ago, but we kind of all knew that that was coming. So behind the scenes, the Promotions Committee and PSD had already been coming up with some ways that we might be able to still do something for the merchants, but do it in a COVID-friendly, safe, passive way compared to our 50,000-person party that we usually throw. So what we came up with was the Rochester Snow Glow. We intentionally renamed it because we didn't want to call it Fire and Ice. And people have the expectation of fireworks and two hills and skating and all those people. We wanted to keep it small. And so we thought Snow Glow was charming. The DDA and PSD have already made the decision to extend the light show through January 31st. So there's our glow. And in working with Chief Shattonholm, he expressed that the ice sculptures, having those in front of the businesses would absolutely be fine. They're something that everyone expects, they enjoy. And this summer, we had already made the decision to make the theme Christmas because we thought Christmas makes people happy. So not. So it all kind of starts falling into place with everything that's going on. In addition to having the ice sculptures in front of the businesses, we would be encouraging businesses to have shopping promotions, much like what they're doing now and what they had done in the fall with some of our other promotions that we ran. So there are things that are passive. People can drive by and see these things. If they do choose to shop, they can go into the shops. Mask wearing, of course, all of the regulations have to be followed. The only other thing that we're bringing to the event from Fire and Ice would be the collegiate carving competition. I don't know if everyone is familiar with that one. Jeff Wolf, who, from Finesse Ice, that does all of our ice sculptures, he actually works with carvers all over the state to do these different types of events. So these would be collegiate-level carvers. They would be spaced out. In our proposal, we have it on West Forest Street, spaced out from Forest Street to the alley. And people to just come and watch for the afternoon, see things, them carving things in place. They would be spaced out. There would be plenty of room on the street for people to have a one-way path where they would walk up one side, down the other, and then exit the street. Any other live carvings that we would have in town, either on Friday evening or Saturday, would also be during the day. And so Chief Shattonholm, he expressed that he would prefer no other event element, active event elements, other than the big bright light show for the evenings. So we're respecting that as well. The only other thing that was included in our presentation that is a big question mark is that the Rochester Lions Club has expressed having their warming tent out there. Obviously, right now, that is not something that is allowed, but everything's changing as the weeks go on. So we included that as a TBD in our presentation so that if it was an opportunity, they have lost a lot of their fundraising opportunities within the community this year because we haven't been able to hold events. So we did put it in there, but obviously they understand and we understand that if the time comes and that is not something that we are able to execute, that we are happy to do that. If the governor's current order, the state's current order expires on January 15th, as indicated, then the restaurants would be able to take advantage of this event as well. And in anticipation of that, many of them have already purchased ice sculptures for their individual businesses. So I think that's my snow glow in a nutshell, and I'll just open it for questions.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Kristy, thank you. You know, I always support a good party. And I, I did, I thank you for addressing the, the warming tent because I, obviously I support this and I know Councilmember Peterson's already made a motion. But that made me nervous, you know, a warming tent, just people coming in in close proximity, not maintaining the six-foot guidelines and everything else like that. So, you know, if there's another way that the Lions Club can make some money if that does not happen because of restrictions, I'm all for it. But that, that part made me nervous. So thank you for addressing it. And I'm sure you and the chief are all over that.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us, Kristi. I'm really excited to see the ice, the ice sculptures in downtown. I think that the DDA and the PSD has taken an abundance of caution over the past several months to really, I think, do, do events and do farmers market, markets in like the safest way possible. So I'm excited to see this event move forward. And I wanted to ask you if you had a specific number of how many businesses have purchased ice sculptures. I've heard other communities aren't able to sell any right now. So I'm wondering how many will have.
I did ask Jenna before the meeting, over 30. I believe we're at 31. So over 30.
That's great.
And we haven't pushed too hard because we didn't have official approval yet. So we wanted to get it out there before the holiday because usually our company starts carving the sculptures over the holiday, that, that couple of weeks, they get started and keep them in the deep freeze for us. But if we do receive approval from council tonight, then we'll put a little bit harder push on the merchants to get that. But we're already 30-plus right now.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I am very excited that you're bringing this out. Maybe because the ice carving, everyone's been asking me if we were going to have that this year. So this is a great way. I do like that you changed the name as well. So it's a, a new event, which is, brings excitement. As far as the warming tent, you know, Fire and Ice is always bitter cold, usually. And I think that that is something, if we can work it with them and, and the chief gets his approval, it would be nice to actually have that there because some of those, I mean, it's no different than the tents they have right now for people eating and dining in. But I would rather be able to get more people to come down and have that opportunity where, you know, one, one way in, one way out. And I think that would actually have some great benefits to us and plus keep people downtown more. So great job and really looking forward to that. And I'm really glad that even though all our businesses are really hurting right now, that they're actually, you know, doing this ice sculpture event to bring in more business. So, thank you.
Did you have a motion, Councilmember Peterson?
I did. A motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Court.
Court by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. And Kristy, there was a, I, I think I might have misspoke last meeting about what, what date exactly is the DDA goals and objectives?
Uh, DDA goals and objectives. Hold on, wait in my January calendar. Stay with me for a second. It is the 13th. The 12th is PSD's. That was a discussion, but then we realized staff couldn't be both places. So it would be the 13th and our regular meeting is the 20th.
Okay, thank you. And have a happy holiday. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thanks. See you. From excitement of parties to adoption of the Personnel Handbook update for second reading and adoption.
No move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Court.
Court by Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Albrecht, discussion.
Um, yes, um, I know, I know I wasn't at the last meeting with the first reading, but I'm, I had talked to Blaine between that meeting and this meeting. And with my background, I know the importance of a handbook and the need to get this done. And I, I heard of the two issues that have since been resolved. I asked for a copy of the handbook, which Blaine gave me. So, you know, this is how, this is exciting reading for me, you know, going through an employee handbook. But for, for the public and council, the, the two sections that I really spent a lot of time with is Section B, which includes all the policies and things that, that, that you need, equal employment opportunity, ethics and conduct, you know, a FOIA policy, social security number privacy. Those are essential parts of any handbook to protect not only the city, but the employees to make them aware of what, what's, what's needed. The other areas are all, all helpful. The second area I spent a lot of time with was Section G, which is your work rules and general policies. Again, these are things that are well-articulated to protect the employees and, and the people they come in contact with in terms of, of, of their, of their work. Where I don't have experience is I, I, you know, I'm, I've not worked in collective bargaining arrangements, but I know City Manager Wing does a great job of this. So this was well-done, well-laid out. And, you know, as I know, the, the motion's been made and I've supported, I, I think it's, it's a good job by the city manager, who also has a very impressive background in human resources, the, this exciting area that we've dedicated our lives to. So I support the changes that are made. And, you know, I think my role on council is to spend more time on some of the areas that I have some experience in. So thank you, Blaine, for giving me the opportunity to go over the handbook in detail.
Thank you for your input on that, Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Beth, for coming. That was easy. And we have an updated personnel book. So thank you very much. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you. Same to you.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Next is a discussion of the zoning ordinance amendment for infill housing and schedule of public hearing for February 8, 2021. I see we have Vidia here tonight. Welcome, Vidia. You just want to give us a little overview? And then we can have discussion. Vidia?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is an amendment to the existing infill ordinance, which is Section 2116 of the zoning ordinance. Issues with regard to the infill ordinance were brought by the Planning Commission more than a year ago. There were several issues of concern in the way the ordinance was written. These were split up into multiple topics that are assimilated in your memo. And some of them have to do with infill and we believe some of them have to do with the larger picture for the city and should be discussed only after the master plan is adopted. There are issues that are not limited just to infill, but have future implications for the city itself. So at this time, the ordinance amendment that is before you deals with specific things, which I shall summarize. Section 2116 is the existing residential infill ordinance. The first thing we did is correct certain illustrations that were there in the ordinance. Some of the language that is in the current ordinance is very ambiguous. So it reads, it's open to interpretation. And quite often, depending upon who is reading it, it has been interpreted differently. So to make it more consistent and easy for homeowners who are looking at the ordinance to see what they will and will not be permitted to do, and to also make the building officials' job more easy in terms of consistently applying the ordinances, some of these sections were corrected with additional language. If you look at subsection five, the existing ordinance language is very convoluted, the way it's written. Based upon discussions with the Planning Commission, the language was changed to say that architectural building features that are extension of the building footprint shall not project into any required front, side, or rear yard. There was a lot of discussion in these newer infill homes, what can and cannot project into these required yards. By clarifying this ordinance, we said, if the foundation of your house continues with that projection, like if your chimney goes all the way to the ground, it is a projection into the required yard and it's not permitted. However, if it's a bay window that is sticking out from your living room into the front or a side yard, a certain amount of projection is permitted because the bay window is not continuous with the foundation. It is a projection from the wall, not from the foundation itself. Similarly, the ordinance was not very clear in how overhangs are permitted because most of the newer homes that are built, the five-foot side yard setbacks, how far can the overhangs on the roof extend? And the Planning Commission discussed and noted that a roof overhang inclusive of all gutters shall may project a maximum up to 18 inches. The way the ordinance was written, it didn't clarify whether gutters were included or not. And whenever something is open-ended, it can be interpreted based upon whether you're reviewing it from the city's standpoint or whether you're looking at it from a developer's standpoint. He also added a clarification to architectural building features and the fact how far they can stick into any required yard. And these architectural building features would be bay windows, alcoves. In many cases, we remove stuff that tends to be part of the foundation itself and not to be confused with something that is merely an architectural feature. The next section we did is there is a separate section of the zoning ordinance 2102, which deals with accessory structures or garage setback. That ordinance was amended by the Planning Commission a couple of years ago, which allowed for a detached garage to be within of the rear property line. However, that was not changed in the infill ordinance. So somebody who already has a home now wants to build a new detached garage, was allowed to build it at a three-foot setback line. But somebody who was building on an infill lot was suddenly required to build it at the five-foot setback line. So the ordinance was being inconsistently applied to property owners. So we made the ordinance consistent so that current infill ordinance, Section 2116, reflects what is already in Section 2102, which was also adopted by reflects what is already in Section 2102, which was also adopted by the zoning ordinance. Another point of discussion for the Planning Commission was egress windows. Lots of basements are being built, and these basement windows typically do under building code are required to have an egress windows. And these egress windows have sort of taken on a life of their own, in many cases with stepped terrace designs. And when you have just a five-foot side yard setback, and you have an egress window that is so deep and can go through the property line, it creates an issue for safety. This particular requirement was discussed with the fire and the police department to find out what is the minimum width required under building and fire code for emergency access along the side yard. And we were informed that it is two. So the ordinance language was added under subsection 11, which clearly says that if within the side yard your egress window is projecting, it can project a maximum of three feet, or you have to have a two-feet clear area. So two-feet clear area would allow for people to walk through, but at the same time, say it is dark and police is responding to an emergency, you have a window well, you might step in there and have a severe injury. So we added a requirement where these window wells need to be provided with a hinged tower. Reason we have added hinged is the event of a fire, you're trapped in the basement, you can push the hinged lid open from inside, or you can lift it up from the outside. It would work either way for the safety of the homeowner and also for safety in the event emergency personnel has to reach the house. So that was another requirement added into the ordinance. And finally, sunken padios, which is another thing we are seeing a lot of infill home. We made a clarification so that the ordinance reflects what currently the building department has been applying and interpreting the ordinance, that they can project into the required property line. They are at grade or below grade because they are sunken, but they can go up to three feet from any side or rear property line, but they cannot be in any front yard. So most of the clarifications that you see in this ordinance are to address specifically infill issues, any conflicts with existing ordinance provisions, or to clarify the way it is being interpreted by the building department versus the way some people are actually understanding it. Additional issues such as nonconformities, extent of impervious surface on lots, those are all larger topics that would require a lot more discussion, and those need to be done after the new master plan rewrite system. Because the master plan will guide what you want these established neighborhoods to look like, and any proposed amendment will have to pick up from that side. So temporarily, we are not going to address those issues because it would be premature to try and change the ordinance when you're actively engaged in the master plan process. In, in a nutshell, these are the changes to the existing infill ordinance. I would be happy to answer any questions. The action before you tonight is if you have any corrections, I would make the corrections and bring it back before you, and you would set it for a public hearing at your February 2021 meeting for a public hearing.
Very good. Councilmember Bavacqua.
Mr. Mayor, thanks, Vidia. You know, obviously, I sat through this at Planning Commission a couple times, more than a couple times. And just still have a little bit of a concern with the, with the covers on these egress window wells. We don't, still don't really define what these are, or the quality of them, or what the expectation is in terms of the load. Are we, something in the building code that is gonna require that?
Yes. When these window wells are designed, when a developer or a homeowner tries to buy these window wells, the window well covers that you get in the market are load-rated. It will be able to take the weight of an adult running over it at full speed or a certain load. The load-bearing capacity is dictated by the building code requirements. So what goes in there won't be something flimsy that somebody steps in and you would sort of sink into the ground. So that would definitely be reviewed by the building.
So, so I guess my, my concern is like a, a fully laden fireman with tank on his back and all the gear. Are, are, are we getting, are these egress window covers that you're getting from Home Depot gonna handle that kind of a load?
I believe the, the reason why we haven't specifically nailed it down, nailed it down, saying what weight load, load it needs to bear is because there are so many new innovations that constantly keep coming in the building field. We don't want to restrict it so narrow that we put an amendment so restrictive in place that tomorrow a new innovative product comes out and our ordinance doesn't account for it. It's left open-ended for the reason that the building official, while reviewing the egress or safety, will actually take a look at what the load-bearing is or note the specifications that are required for the tower.
Is there nothing we can put in there that would protect a, like I say, a fully laden fireman? Like, is there maybe?
I can definitely, I, I would be happy to speak with the city's building official and put in some language there that is open-ended enough to make sure that, maybe I can add a clarification saying that any cover that is installed must conform to the latest requirements of the building code for load-bearing capacity.
Manager?
Yeah, if I, I just quickly looked at both Lowe's and Home Depot. It looks like just the standard polycarbonate window is 250 pounds or more is their weight-bearing capacity. So we can talk with the fire chief to kind of see what, you know, a minimum is and maybe just put them a minimum weight-bearing. You know, if it's like 225 or something like that, so that there's maybe a minimum. And, you know, if somebody comes up with a better, stronger, you know, that, that would just, I think, maybe get to Councilmember Bavacqua's kind of concern.
Councilmember Bavacqua.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One real quick follow-up on that. And then any kind of thought on, you know, whether they're gonna maintain that, that load-bearing over, you know, 10, 10 years out in the weather? Like, if it's some sort of fiberglass, I, I don't know. My concern is, is I just don't want some, I don't want us putting in shoddy materials that five years down the road, you know, someone steps on it and they're gonna go right through it.
I can.
You can't, you know, make these things so narrow and restrictive, but is there a way we can think about some of this stuff and ask those questions before we, you know, move forward?
I will look at some language, see if we can add something there. But from personal experience, at least, I know the fiberglass window covers are pretty much indestructible. The fiberglass or the metal grill, it just, personally, I have a window well that was installed 18 years ago, and I can jump on it, and it, it still looks like the day it was installed. I could afford to lose some weight, but I think it's pretty sturdy.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Vidia. Nice to see you. I always like checking out everyone's backgrounds on their, in their offices. So I just kind of want to go through the, the, the items that you presented here. So on the projections and the overhangs, I have no problem with that. The egress window, in your description, it says encourage or require, but the draft ordinance says shall. So shall to mean, mean, means we're saying we are going to require the cover on the egress window, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, I guess I, I side in with Councilmember Bavacqua's comments for safety there. I think it's important. On the impervious surface coverage, I agree that needs to go with the master plan for more discussion. On the building size roof projection, so this is where we're basically modifying how we measure the height of infill housing, so the elevation would be considered?
We are not modifying how the height of the structure is measured. That is a standard that the city has consistently applied. What we are trying to clarify over here is the projection into the side yard. Because the way the ordinance is written, it says roof overhangs, and the question came up, by overhangs, you mean just architectural overhangs, or does it include the gutters also, which are generally not considered as architectural feature? So we just wanted to clarify that either overhangs or gutters, it doesn't matter, a combination of either, no more than 18 inches into the side. We have not revised the height except to add a clarification based upon a comment raised by Planning Commission member Gassen, who is an architect. Mr. Gassen had brought up the question that you need some clarification on how you are reading this, and that was the only clarification added. We didn't change the text at all in any way for the way the height is measured.
So in that section one, where we have the picture where it says average grade, highest plus lowest divided by two?
Correct.
Are we striking out that illustration? What does that red line mean?
We are striking out the illustration because there is a reference to an illustration that's not even there in the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
I have no idea how it got stuck, so we are just taking out.
Okay. Moving along. So regarding the garages, I think we need to have some more discussion around the garages. Garages are always controversial because this is a balance between the visual curb appeal versus the, I'll say, amount of cement that we have. So what was the recommendation clearly from Planning Commission on this?
The Planning Commission did not touch the garage ordinance. The only reason it's included here is this section, we just tied the section into Section 2102, which was the section that was amended by the Planning Commission and the City Council a few years ago. And all we are doing is correcting the two sections, so somebody doesn't read this section and forget about the other section. The two sections are essentially, so we are just referencing that section. We have not changed the garage setbacks or addressed long driveways going to the back. The Planning Commission decided that is a much larger topic. Once we get into that, it's going to be, it's going to take on a life of its own. So we said we would get these done, and the garage would be a topic handled by the Planning Commission all on its own in 2021.
Okay, all right, thank you. That clarifies what we're being asked. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the garages is a major, major topic of conversation. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So a few things through here. So, yeah, it does need a lot of work. I think we're leaving out a few things that can affect us long-term, especially on the garages, as stated, to discuss more. That three-foot minimum does not go ahead and allow for any properties that have an easement back there to where that would be affected in the future. Also, on this roof overhang, just to inclusive of gutters, I actually, I know with the master planning process and things like that, I think we need to start looking at what is becoming more of a popular way to utilize and live in your yard, and that is to have a covered patio or a cover over the decks and the patios. And I would hate to see that, you know, that would be off like the backyard, not your side yards. And I would like to see something like that discussed as well for future to do that. I, I really am not happy at all with the, the side yard window wells and even only given a two-foot minimum there. That, that there, I think we need to have, you know, you can't even get a mower through some of these yards, and some of these are really pushed to where some houses have one window well, you know, first, and then a little further down, there's another window well. I, I think that those window wells, and I think we really need to talk about it, is how those are actually placed to where they are on that property, and then they have to have three feet from the outset, from the last part of that window well to the property line. Because here we are encroaching again onto the property and pushing everything, you know, to where you might as well, you know, throw rocks out your window into the neighbor's house. And that's how close these are going to end up being in the future. So when you have the window wells like that, I understand the safety concern that's been discussed. However, we have a lot of homes that do not have a cover, okay? There, most of them are not, are not in compliance, wouldn't, they would all be non-conforming. And how are we going to enforce that as a city? And I also believe that we are really, it for us to start dictating what someone's going to use to put on one of these is, you know, unless we're paying for it as a city, I, I think there's a fine line there. But I appreciate the work on it. I would actually hold off on this and not do anything until we really get into master planning, the new master plan process, because I feel that infill, this infill housing guidelines are going to either dramatically change the landscape of what we have. And as Mayor Protem Salvia stated earlier, this is all on paper, but when you look at what something happens in real life after it's done, it is not a pretty sight. And I think that there needs to, we need to proceed with caution making these changes. Thank you very much, Sal.
Vidia, comment?
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I want to provide a clarification that the ordinance amendment you see before you is not new regulations. It is basically putting into words what the city has already been applying. If the city has been approving basement egress window two feet from the property line, our initial recommendation was that it be three feet from the property line, and that would create nonconformities throughout the city. I'm sure Nick can add something to it, but the ordinance language was written to reflect what is currently the practice of approving these windows all over the city. All the windows that are located on newer infill developments that you have are all located two feet from the property line, which is why we deferred to the building official and the fire chief give us their opinion as to what they consider as being acceptable. And the ordinance language was written in order to reflect what the city has already been doing. These are not new regulations or impositions on homeowners.
No, I, and I understand that, Vidia, and I appreciate that you stating that again. However, I, I know that, I just, I have a hard time with that because, no, I haven't voted for any of these infill things since we've had them, you know that. Because we are not looking at the long-term effects that have taken place on these properties, which I also find interesting, that we're changing the grade to where the grades can be lower, which also, depending on, we're only looking at one piece of property individually. And we can go through town, and I stated this every time we talked about it, I can go point out every house where the elevations and the, all the way to the side yards, these driveways that go right to the edge of the yard and everything else are all encroaching in theory on other people's property with the water and everything else. You know, and everyone's like, no, it doesn't do that. Yes, it does. I mean, it's happening everywhere. And we don't have, we, we have a different type of elevation in different parts of town and everything else. And I think that we need to be very mindful when we're making these decisions here. And I don't think this is the time to even make these changes until we've really had a full discussion talking about how the current housing market here with the way we've allowed things to happen has not been good and how we've ended up with more issues. And honestly, we've had many issues of, you know, homeowners being very upset with the person building next door because they're that close, they ruin a fence, they mess up the yard, all kinds of things. But I, I do thank you just for clarifying for everybody else. But yes, I know that this is, I'm just still very unhappy with this whole write-up, and I think it needs a lot more discussion before we start implementing anything in here, even if it's to correct what it is. Because we need to really focus on how this is going to really have lasting effects on everything we do building forward. And we already have infrastructure issues. We don't need any more infrastructure issues. And those can all be attributed to the way we are allowing building to take place right now.
Mr. Banda, did you have a comment?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Bavacqua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little bit of a follow-up comment on the, the egress window covers. From my perspective, that, that is a, a safety issue for our first responders. And when it comes to safety, I, I think, you know, as a city government, we can require that residents build and use certain building materials. I don't think it's an, an encroachment on their rights in any way. Thanks.
Council, do, we have a motion to have a public hearing on February 8.
No move.
Councilmember Peterson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Okay, so to Councilmember Bavacqua's comment, I, I understand that, and it is about safety. However, as Vidia had stated earlier, there, this isn't ever-changing, ever-changing in the building code constantly. And if we're going to start stating that one thing is this way, but it's not, they have it with everything that is required right now in building code. They have it for radon detectors, they have it for carbon monoxide, they have it for fire alarms. I mean, They have it from radon detectors, they have it for um, carbon monoxide, they have it for uh, fire alarms. I mean. There are different specifics for every part of building right now in, in new home construction and. I mean, we are following code and always have follow code. However, when it comes to those specifically stating what type. Is where you're going to end up with an issue because just like our water meters, just like our parking meters. Things no longer exist, they don't make them anymore. And then we are totally out of conforming, you know, not conforming, moving forward.
Is there a motion or?
I made a motion to move it to public hearings, so it could be read, but I don't think that, I, I don't think it should even be going to, to there.
Right, what?
For the motion for a public hearing on February eighth.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Peterson, did you make the motion? I'm sorry.
No, I was actually, I wanted to speak before we talked about it, so.
Who made, who made a motion?
Yes. I did because I thought it was so we could continue discussion.
Okay, so, so Councilwoman Peterson made a motion with support by the Mayor Pro Tem Salvia to have a. Um, public hearing February eighth, further discussion. Councilmember Vavakwa.
Yeah, uh, just a procedural question. So would any adjustments regarding weight-bearing requirements on a cover? Be included in a public hearing with these, uh, with these documents?
Yes, I would be making the necessary revisions that strike through so that. Uh, council can see what changes have been made since this meeting and that copy will be sent to the city for publication for the public here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Uh, yes, um, I want to withdraw the motion because it was stated that we needed to have more discussion regarding the garages and everything else. And so. It's not, I made it just so we could continue talking per Robert's rules, but. Um, I don't think that we should be moving this forward when there was plenty of discussion about things that still need to be looked at. For another day.
City, Mr. City Clerk, can?
Your Honor, your practice is um, normally to let council people withdraw motions. Even though Robert's rules really requires that you vote on it and vote it down, but um, your practice happens that, so.
The courtesy of Councilwoman Peterson to withdraw the motion. Is there now a, a maker of the motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll read.
Member Vavakwa has made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, do you wanna?
I'll second that motion and, and clarification um, that for the garages, the only change that is in this draft. That we'll have possibly a public hearing on February eighth is that we're gonna. We're not talking about changing anything in the, the ordinance, we're just combining the two sections, correct?
Correct. Correct. We are not revising any requirements for garages or changing anything. We are just. Making sure that it's referencing the correct section. It's just a reference correction.
Now just, uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
Just, just to clarify, and I, I think uh, Councilmember Vavakwa did, uh, Vidya, we will get revisions. That people have presented today well before the February eighth city council meeting, is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And those, so those revisions um, will then be what's presented on February eighth.
Alright.
Or, or do we get another bite at the apple? Do we get to talk about it again in a council meeting before then City Manager Wing?
You could, but the, the public uh, hearing would be the date that you would formally take and, and also get feedback from the public. Um, with the public hearing, um, we need to send out a, you know, the notice in the newspaper and that's where the timing and. When we checked with the clerk's office due to the, the current schedule and then what we have coming up on our January agendas. The February eighth, twenty twenty one is, is the, the, the optimum date at this point or later.
Okay, I, I, that, that, that helps me out. I just know there's some bright council members who are very um, passionate about this. Uh, this issue and, and are, are well more educated on it than I am, so. I just wanted to make sure they had a chance and we had a chance to make sure that these changes have been made that have. Uh, come up and that the, the public will be able to comment on it. So, thank you for clarifying.
And I, and I'd just like to make the comment that this was thoroughly discussed. Over many, many meetings that the Planning Commission and the, and the Planning Commission. Uh, unanimously supported this. So ju- just that, that was discussed um. Many times at the Planning Commission, uh. Three, four times, I, I think, uh, uh, we, we did it, so. Um, Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, but Vidya did state that uh, the Planning Commission did not take on the garage issue, is that correct?
Yes, we did not take on the garage issue and the impervious surface area because those issues believe are. Or they are larger topics for discussion at a later time with possible implications from the master plan. Whatever you're revising at this time on the infill ordinance can be taken at this time without having any. Impact on the master plan process that is going along in parallel.
Right, and the master plan process will take a while um, to, to complete. Uh, Councilmember Vavakwa.
And, s- sorry, just for my own curiosity and, and this kind of follows up on a question that uh, Councilmember Peterson had. Um, what is the procedure for um, uh, addressing um, non-compliant? Uh, egress windows that would be made um. If passing this, this, this ordinance, um. Would they be required to then put caps on them or are they, are they grandfathered and not necessary?
Typically, whenever an ordinance requirement is adopted, you do not force people who are already got their homes in there. As, you know, make it mandatory. You do not make it retroactively mandatory. Um, all the new homes will be subject to this requirement. Uh, the city can however. Let a public interest notification sent out to homeowners, letting them know that this is for safety and should they choose to, the existing homeowners. They can add the cover on. Whenever an ordinance is adopted, it's always applicable that point forward.
Thank you.
Did the mayor drop out?
I think we lost the mayor.
Okay, so I think um, it's time for a roll call vote on that.
Not until the mayor gets back, cause he's a vote.
Well, we can wait. It's also a, a job of the Mayor Pro Tem to run the meeting in the absence of the mayor.
I understand that, but this is a vote on something important.
Okay, we'll give him a few moments.
Mayor Pro Tem, could I ma- maybe make a point too, where we have a, a moment?
Yes.
I- in the past, in some of my other communities too, when there's been safety issues, uh, the communities have actually looked for grant opportunities. So for this particular, like a window, uh, the easement, sometimes there are grant opportunities so that, you know, maybe there's a matching grant. Let's say it's gonna cost, uh, again, I can pull it up on my phone here, the, the one was, uh. Last one I looked up, I think was at Lowe's, um, it's like forty-five dollars. So, um, you know, for, depending on the size of these windows. You know, we, we could potentially, you know, see if there's dollars available for compliance.
You said forty-five dollars or forty-five hundred?
Do you want us to proceed then?
For, yeah, so depending on the size, the, the, the cheapest one was forty-five dollars, but there are some.
Okay.
There'll be a.
They were gonna hold up for just a few minutes and see if you could, uh. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, that was the mayor on the phone and he is trying to log back in, so.
We will wait.
It is currently eight nineteen, so if we wanna set a time limit or check on it in the three or four minutes. Or could um, set this item aside, one move on, but that doesn't do uh, steward any good either.
Yeah, we kinda need him for the next item.
Okay.
Could, could I suggest maybe a five-minute, uh, uh, I guess, uh, bathroom or water break?
Whatever you want.
That would allow us to work with the mayor if, even if he has to just phone in by, by, by a phone call instead of.
Right, I, right, I was thinking a, a phone in as a, as a, as a backup plan that seems to work pretty well.
So if we could just.
Alright, so we'll, we'll take a, a five-minute recess, so it's eight nineteen. That.
Thank you.
Okay, five-minute recess.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
Alright, so we're back. I apologize, I have no idea what the problem is. Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Running that, if it goes out again, just please go ahead, um. About me, so we're, I was kinda hearing something, we were having the vote?
I, I think, I think I would probably just check to see if there are any other comments from council, but I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, just one. I mean, not to be smart about it, but. Um, this whole thing with the window wells, because most of the homes being built today, that's always been a part of it, but. The analogy of somebody actually standing on them when those are the places where we would be working to try to get people out, so. I don't know, just throw that out there. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Vavakwa.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No, needs work.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Vidya, for coming and have a very happy holiday and thank you for all your work on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Next is consideration of appointments to the newly formed Grant Subcommittee. Um. I've, I've asked um, Councilmember Peterson to serve on this board. I've asked Anthony to serve on the board. Uh, you heard me ask Sue Neal to be on this board. We're gonna have Linda Kurtski Davis. And then we're going to ask somebody, Colin or somebody from the um. Um, DPW uh, Parks Department. So that's gonna be a subcommittee that's gonna work on grants for the. Parks and Park Area. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
I think also, um, Alan Smith from the Community House has been there beyond this committee.
Alan, absolutely. I had his name on the list here. Okay, so then, um, at the next meeting, we can, or, or, uh, Mayor Pro, um. Mr. City Managers, are those just appointments? We don't need to vote on those?
Correct. This is uh, an ad hoc committee at this point, so um, you can just make these appointments.
So do those appointments and then administration will get with you guys to uh, get going on, on some of this important grant work. So thank you guys for serving. Next, we have a consideration on the recruit. The creation and appointments of the Master Plan Steering Committee. So the. The company that we've hired has asked to have a master plan steering committee that. And I've talked to the city manager about this, is a very large committee. Um. You know, to me, a, a, a committee this size is, is too big, but this is uh. The, the, the company thinks this is what they want. They've had success with it, these sizes in other communities, especially with Zoom. Um, so they want to do this, so, you know, if, if, if they think it's good. Um, we fired them to give us suggestions, so. The committee tonight is going to be the, the chairman of the, and the city manager is gonna help me with this, this. Chairman of the City Beautiful Committee, it's gonna be three city council people. Uh, the chairman of the DDA and a, another member, the historical committee chairperson. Um, the director of the library, the director of the OPC. Planning Commission Chairman and, and one member, PSD Chair. The Raya Chair, the Raya Chair, the ZBA Chair. Four business owners that we're going to choose and four residents as well as city staff. So that's a very large committee that's gonna meet a few times in, in the course of this program. Um, to kind of be the steering committee, um. And so, a- again, and we've, I've been tr- trying to get ahold of some of the people over the holidays, but. That's who we want on the uh, committee. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
I think the, the only one, and I'm sure there's a lot of bullet points, was the Pink Creek Trailway Commission person, uh, that, their chairperson as well. And, and um, I know you and I have had this conversation, so instead of just the three residents that we listed, did you want the fourth one to be the a- at-large resident?
Yeah, so we're gonna try, yeah, we're gonna try, yeah, we're gonna try to have residents from different parts of the city. And stuff like that. And if anybody has residents that you wanna suggest to me. Um, please feel free to get, we haven't chosen them yet, so uh, we have some ideas, but if anybody has. Um, people they want, so pass that on to me. Uh, Councilmember Peterson, you had a question to comment?
I, I did, Mayor. If we could, uh, just to go back to the um, one prior regarding the uh, Grant Subcommittee.
Yes.
Can we actually ask uh, someone from the Pink Creek Trailways to be on that as well, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's what, so if anybody has some names, uh, residents, we'd be happy to have those. But that's gonna be this, the steering committee that's going to meet a few times in the course of this process. And again, the um. And I'm gonna, you know, be reaching out to people, but that's what the uh, the, our new planners want it.
And, and Mayor, again, I'm happy to, through, you know, with the clerk's office and administration, reach out to all the committee chairs. Um, and I have the contacts for the various uh, director positions for the organizations as well, so I'm happy to. Okay, I'll, I'll coordinate with you when we talk tomorrow.
Yeah, sounds good. And we're gonna try to, you know, we wanna get this, you know. We, we wanna get our planner to, you know, start this process, so we're trying to get uh, everything in order. And try and, I know the city managers had meetings, um. With, with the staff and they've driven around town and stuff, so we're trying to get them going as, as fast as possible. Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, and you know, Mayor, um, I just wanted to let you know that I would be interested in serving on that and. Think that um, with the grant opportunities, um, with that subcommittee, that would be a nice segue, plus. I actually was on um, the first one that we put together a while back, so. It would be nice and I'm very excited to have this company here for us.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will announce that last time because there's been a number of council people that have asked as well. Oh, but I, I appreciate that, so. Next is on to receive a report from the various boards and commissions, report from the RARAB board, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and um, uh, s- some good news in a, in a very challenging year. We had our meeting on December second. And then we had a special meeting the following um, week, which I'll talk about in, in a second. Uh, a couple items just to, to mention, um. We, we received reports from each of the leaders, the supervisors, and one of the areas uh, that um. Seemed to do well, which is consistent with when we got the report on the community garden, was our outdoor activities, um, our. Uh, softball, baseball, all the other kinds of things where people could be outdoors and socially distanced, did very, very well. In fact, the numbers. Were higher than twenty nineteen. Secondly, I mentioned that uh, the trunk or treat was a success. And I saw from the uh, city uh, council meeting, meeting that I missed, that. Uh, Councilmember Peterson uh, uh, talked about the milk and cookies with Santa. Again, this was done outdoors on December eleventh. Again, maintaining social distancing so that parents could get pictures of uh, their, their kids or families with Santa. You know, again, socially distanced in the background. So that, that, those are just, they've, they, I really wanna remark. On the staff of, of the, of the RARAB who've been very creative through the year to just come up with ways to, to generate revenue and then, you know. You know, a, a year with too many challenges. Uh, the great news I wanted to share was that um, our fund balance will be. Uh, over five hundred thousand this year, uh, so we will have a, um, hit. Uh, our twenty-nine point seven percent fund balance, uh, the target is thirty percent, so. Uh, that was made, uh, made doable because of a grant, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar grant that we applied for. From the Oakland Together COVID Support Fund. Um, that is why we had the special meeting on December ninth, because we had to. Put in the agreements, the inter-local agreements that had not existed before, so we could receive the checks. We had a. Very uh, uh, important and, and unanimous approval of that agreement, so that we received the check uh. Uh, a few days afterwards, so, uh, great news. Again, we're hoping. Again, we're hoping, like every other group, that we'll be able to do more and more activities. We still are doing dance. We're still doing social distancing within the facility where we can, so um, uh, they've they've done a great job, but the things like the parties and the get togethers and things where revenue was generated. We've had not, we've not had a birthday party celebrated since pre-COVID. We've not had people renting out, you know, the facility for any reasons since pre-COVID, so. Uh, but all in all, I just want to salute the RARAB uh, leadership and and staff for a great job in a challenging year.
Thank you. That's wonderful news. Uh, Mayor Proton, Salvia.
Thank you. Yeah, just congratulations on getting that grant. Every time I drive past the building, I've been just wondering how things are going, and so, um, thank God for that grant. Great news.
Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, yes, I just want to say it is, uh, they've been doing a fabulous job there. Um, my granddaughter was actually there for the Santa milk and cookies, so it's you know, all of them there are a fabulous staff and they've worked really hard to uh, they work very well on the fly, making changes and going with the changes, still making everybody uh, feel like they have a place to go to enjoy these special events, so hats off to them.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht, for that excellent report. That's that's, in these tough times, boy, that's uh, that's pretty, pretty good news. Uh, next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very productive meeting last Wednesday. Our concentration was on the recent headlines about monarch butterflies borderlining on the endangered species list. So if monarchs are added to that list, we all feel very passionately that something needs to be done, and the Rochester Pollinators wants to try and expand their mission. And the City Beautiful is one hundred percent behind that cause, so we want to shift, I think, our focus a little bit more towards saving the pollinators and helping to build and grow the native plant gardens that they've already been so committed to these past few summers. So one of the things that the Rochester Pollinators has done really well is recruiting volunteer gardeners to learn how to plant and grow these these native gardens. We have one at the Rochester Hills Public Library. There's one that's gone into the municipal park, um, and we're working with several other partners to get some more gardens in the ground this spring. Sales to support this initiative um through the Rochester Pollinators brand. The, I guess we've had great support from Busy Buzz Store in downtown Rochester and selling our merchandise there. And we've also got an online shop that's doing very well. Marilyn Trent, the head of the Rochester Pollinators, has been very busy with presentations throughout the community, including the Rochester Rotary Club, which we did virtually. And um, we've also talked about sidewalks in Elizabeth Park and the fact that we'll be moving forward with including that feature, hopefully in the spring in Elizabeth Park. That was a commitment that we had um, through one of our new developments. And then we also had a new swing donated to the municipal park. It's a really beautiful, like architectural piece that will complement the sundial that's there. So we're really grateful for that generous donation. And then I had to hop off early. Maybe Nick knows if we set, I believe our next meeting will be specific to goals and objectives.
Yeah, we, yeah, thank you, Mayor, if I may. We, yeah, we actually set up, we continued that meeting and thought we could handle it right then, so they came up with some direction, uh, the bureau on the, what we call the GBB building. And then we talked about a whole to help with fundraising for the memorial benches and the butterfly garden, put up a panel on the river. It kind of talks about what the things the City Beautiful are doing right by the river as you go over the bridge and starting to work on really focusing on that area to raise funds to finish it off between the river and the the gommen at this point. And then the best thing of the whole thing we came up with was um, talking about rain guards, and they really wanted to get involved. We were looking at private property, but instead we came up with, if you can picture going over the the main bridge, both Art and Apples Bridge, as you go towards the Pink Creek Trail, towards Retro Fitness, on the right-hand side is a grassy area that is not used ever in the Art and Apples because it's too wet. And that started making us think, we thought, what a great place for a demonstration rain garden. You could put thousands of plants in that area, all the way into the woods. And actually, if you were sitting at Silver Spoon, you could look out and see that same area from the other side of the river. By opening up the area by the gommen, we'll be able to see across the river to that area. So they're gonna really focus on trying to do like a Kickstarter, to raise funds, create a rain guard there. And really narrow down their focus to a couple of projects that are doable and get excited about fundraising after. So we just thought, you know what, we're already here, let's keep the meeting going, and we got it all wrapped up. They'll put a report together and they'll make a presentation to council in January.
Sounds good. Thank you, Nick. All set? Uh, Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next is on a report from the Facilities Committee. Um, we have three members, Mayor Proton, Salvia.
Thank you. So, um, at our last meeting, December sixteenth, we reviewed some additional um, proposals and alternate provided by the the two lowest bidders. We've kind of narrowed it down to those two lowest bidders. Um, I think it's probably appropriate that we start making it public knowledge that one of the bidders, uh, the name of the company is Wing Construction. They have no relation, no affiliation, no family tree connection to City Manager Blaine Wing. So um, just put that, put that on the record. Um, so but the two um alternate proposals basically revolve around the basement um, and an elevator. Um, so we still have some more details that we need to get. Um, we also um, want some clarified numbers regarding the grant dollars that may or may not, you know, the final number of grant dollars that are, and I'm sorry, not grant, the bond dollars that are in the in the in the fund balance still um, relative to the completion of the DPW building. As well as to have the Community House provide the detailed um, business plan and proposed revenue money that would be coming to the city. So really kind of buttoning up some details. We have another meeting scheduled in early January for the Facilities Committee. Um, but I would expect a proposal coming before council um in the very early part of twenty twenty one.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, next is on to new business referral miscellaneous. Oceana, any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Received the check register report and the city manager update, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So there's three check reports uh from December fourth, eleventh, and seventeenth, and if it's okay, I'll just jump right into the uh, manager uh updates. Um, just just a few. Um, first one, uh, we'll continue to keep council and the public advised on the vaccine as it arrives in Oakland County. As of uh, right now, we've um, gone through what is known as uh one, and then one A is started, and that one A is for the Emergency Medical Service Personnel, so the EMS, so that's uh paramedics and uh EMT, so it could be a firefighter, paramedic, or, you know, or it could be just the specific position. Um, and that's throughout Oakland County. So some of our staff uh today was actually lucky enough to uh to get the vaccine, and so that has started. And um, you know, as we get more information and as we go through the various tiers, um, we'll post that through our city website and out through social media. So again, as we're getting that from the Oakland County Health Department, that then gets pushed down to the sixty-some municipalities in Oakland County. Uh, next, the um Restaurant Relief Program that Oakland County's put together um, with the the current federal uh CARES Act dollars is continuing to be rolled out. There's gonna be two parts to that, and as more information uh becomes available, we'll be sharing that with our partners with the DDA, PSD, the Chamber, and working with our businesses. And then finally, I just wanna uh thank our our city staff, our partners with the DDA and PSD is uh, for all their efforts this year. It's been a very uh challenging year. I also want to thank city council um, for your continued support and leadership, and I know twenty twenty one will be a better year. And I wish everybody a safe holiday season and a lot of health in, uh, good health in twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk?
I do not have anything except my evaluation later this evening, Your Honor.
Uh, City Attorney Jeff?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Assistant City Manager, Banda?
All set, thank you, sir. Happy holidays to everybody.
You too. Uh, Police Chief? Steve? All good?
Yeah, I'm mute.
All good. Thank you.
Thank you for your service this year. Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just um, another, I just wanna uh just state that um Sue Ann Douglas is going to be greatly missed. She was a great friend, and um, she was an incredibly amazing woman. And um, we need to make sure her legacy lives on. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Uh, yes, uh, two weeks or a week ago, I was uh recovering from surgery, so um, my surgery didn't end until four o'clock, and the painkillers and anesthesia I was on probably would not have may have made it a fun city council meeting if I attended, but it was probably not a good idea, so I would like to request an excused absence from uh the city council, if that's the proper form, uh, for my absence last week.
Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Sage.
Support.
Support by the Mayor Proton. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, thank you for that. And uh, again, I wanted to echo the mayor's uh uh, statement at the beginning, and Councilmember Peterson, um, I admired Sue Ann Douglas for her public service. Um, you know, she actively participated in our city council meetings, and um I offer condolences to her for her family and and will miss her greatly. I would also like to thank administration, uh, uh, City Manager Wing, all the department heads, and uh, for really rallying this year, uh, so that we could do these kinds of meetings. Uh, we continue to run the city with with with, you know, help support the city as city council members, so thank you for that. And finally, I wish um, uh, everybody uh on the call and 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 all my fellow council members, administration staff, a great holiday season and a happy twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir, other than to wish everyone a wonderful holiday.
You, Mayor Proton, Salvia?
Yes, thank you. One quick administrative item. Um, in the council packet, I would have thought we would have the link for the Zoom meeting. Um, but there, so if we could add it, we've got a lot of procedure on how to attend the virtual meeting, but we should just have a link to the meeting. So if we could make sure that's added administratively, um, just it, and hopefully we're not in Zoom for a very, very long time, but as long as we have these, it just should be part of the packet that residents or anyone can just click on it and come right into the into the um meeting with us.
I'll have to see. I believe, I know, the the last two that I did had the link in it, but I I did not double check this this one, so if it wasn't.
Couldn't find it. Um, someone who presented tonight called and looked for the link earlier today, so that's how I was brought to my.
Happy to, happy to make sure that's included.
Okay, thank you. And then just Merry Christmas, um, Happy New Year. We all are looking forward to twenty twenty one. And just thank you to everyone, really. Um, it's been an amazing year. Um, even though we've had a lot of challenges, uh, we've accomplished a lot, and um, thank you, and um, enjoy enjoy some time safely with family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. I just wanna wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bavacqua?
Uh, nothing from me, other than, yeah, happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, and uh, let's have a better new year.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a, I have a couple things. Um, one, uh, Anthony um, got his vaccine shot today with the paramedics, so I think that's very good news that we're starting the process of hopefully getting everybody vaccinated. So that's good news. Also, I talked with, or I had a text from um, Commissioner Adam Kokenderfer, and he says that there's a, we're gonna be able for the DDA to apply for aid for equipment and supplies for the past year for COVID-related things. So hopefully the DDA can get some of that money back. So that's, that's a good thing. So I, um, you know, thank um, Councilmember Bavacqua, who was also kind of got got us going on that as well, so thank you for that. This really was an amazing year. I want to thank everybody for their hard work, City Manager Blaine Wing and his staff. Um, and just everybody on the council, and just to me, the community really came together from the OPC calling seniors to see how they were doing, from the shop local. Um, I think the community really rallied together to do a great job and 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 really took what was a pretty bad year and put the best spin that we could. And I'm really confident in two thousand and twenty one is gonna be a great year. Um, so everybody take some time, rest up, enjoy the holidays, enjoy your friends and family. And we'll get back to work in January, and hopefully um, we may actually see each other next year in person, so uh that would be great. So again, happy holidays to everybody. Um, we are gonna go into closed session for one pending litigation and also a personnel issue. Uh, Mr. Manager, are we contemplating coming back?
Yes, I I believe council's gonna make an action in regards to the evaluation, so that needs to be publicly, so um, that's why there was an email that went out that has the link to go into closed session. Um, it's a separate link so that our TV uh broadcast can be put on pause while we go in, and then we'll follow up and go back into the this current Zoom meeting so that it could be live and open session.
Okay, so we are going to uh adjourn this meeting, then we're gonna log off, log into the closed session at the closed session, and then if you choose to come back for the public thing, so. Okay, so, that that clear, everybody?
Yeah, we're in.
Motion to go into closed session, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Go into closed session.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Peterson, go into closed session. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see everybody then. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna come back in this, thank you. So we're gonna come back into session for the December twenty first, two thousand twenty city council meeting. Uh, we're back into session. Um, do we have a motion?
Yep, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve um the evaluation of the city clerk at the two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent pay increase. Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everybody be safe. And thank you, and we'll see everybody next year, and uh, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you much. Oh.
What do you need?
I don't know. Did someone say Lee Anne?
Oh, no, no, so thank you.
Oh, okay. Good night.
Night.